Good evening. This regular meeting of the Moncorb Area School District Board of Education will come to order. Role call: Danny.
Here.
Diana.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
Here.
Jessica. Kimberly.
Here.
Leah.
Here.
And I'm here, of course. Dr. Slarno, can you certify that this meeting has been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Great, thank you. Let's stand if you're able and say pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do we have a volunteer to read the mission statement?
Sure. The Moncorb Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-filled members of society.
Thank you, Kimberly. Moving on to number two item in minutes approval. Before we begin with our approval of the agenda, I want to say just a brief word about one item that is not on the agenda. You may recall that there was discussion about placing a vote, some kind of action having to do with a return to full-time school. That is not on the agenda. As I'm sure you know, if you've looked at the agenda, the district has been advised by its attorneys that orders of the Public Health Madison-Dane County carry the weight of law, and we do not want to take any action that would put us at variance to an order that has the weight of law. Moving on to item 2A, approval of the presented or revised agenda. Do we have any revisions? Hearing none, all entertain a motion to approve. Jessica has made a motion to approve. Jeff has seconded, excuse me, a motion to approve the presented agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the presented agenda is approved. Item 2B, approval of the February 15, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Jeff has moved.
Seconded.
And Danny has seconded a motion to approve the February 15, 2021 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the February 15 regular meeting minutes are approved. Item 3A, student spotlight, Decker Riley. Where is Decker? There he is.
There's that cutie pie. Rachel Johnson and Katie Ginnanen from the ELCPC, along with Decker's teacher, Mrs. Bundrock, have recommended Decker for this auspicious occasion. Rachel, can I turn it over to you? Katie, can I turn it over to you?
Absolutely. So it's interesting because I've never had a student by three different people be nominated, three different school adults nominated Decker. Mrs. Bundrock, Mrs. Ginnanen, and Mrs. Miller, our social worker, were all part of saying that this little guy needed to be recognized at the board level. So a couple of different words that came up from all of them, caring, responsible, and respectful. On two different occasions, Ms. Bundrock had students joining her group, her cohort, and Decker's cohort, and in both instances, he was the first to make those two new students feel welcome on completely separate occasions, making sure that they had the best day ever, knowing where to go, what things were doing, and so forth. Ms. Miller, our social worker, actually was helping out in our fire department one day, and she realized that she wasn't Mr. Saint, and that things weren't necessarily happening just the way Mr. Saint would have them done, but Decker was giving his classmates friendly reminders to follow the group plan and what those rules were. And so, again, just perfect examples of how to be a Viking. I don't know, Miss Ginnanen or Miss Bundrock, would either one of you want to add any other special nuggets? Decker is just a great role model, and he's always one that we can count on to say, if you're wondering what he should look like and sound like right now, take a look at Decker. So he is an awesome Viking, and we love having him at the ELC.
Just as a first-year teacher, Decker's been like a dream student to have in the classroom, just always been super awesome and super helpful with all of our friends. So it's been great having you in my class, Decker. Thank you.
Well, Decker, we've just put a picture of you on your special day on our screen for everyone to see, and we also see that you have some very special people around you tonight. Can you introduce them for us, please?
So this is my mom, my sister, and this is my dad.
We know that kindness.
Thank you.
We know that kindness and warmth comes from family, right? They teach as much as we do at school, and how grateful we are to you, Mom and Dad. And sibling, we're so grateful for you. Can we give a round of applause to our friend Decker? We're just thankful for you. You're just a special little boy, and we can't wait to see all the good things you'll be up to in the years to come, my friend.
All right, brother, keep up the good work. Nice job.
Thank you.
All right, here we go. Item 3B, school news. Kate.
Hi, everyone. So just three quick things that I wanted to share with you all tonight. First off, our girls' gymnastics team took home second at skate past weekend, so that is super exciting. Secondly, Wisconsin-Becca State competition begins this Wednesday, so that's another exciting thing to look forward to. And finally, we had a few of our own students move on to the Youth Art Month Skate Show this March, so my congratulations goes out to all of them. Thank you.
Awesome, great report, as always. Kate, does anybody else have any school news? Great, hearing none, we'll move on to item 3C, citizen comments. Those wishing to speak should please text their first and last name to 608-250-9166. 608-250-9166. The number again is 608-250-9166. Anybody dialing in?
I don't see anybody, no.
Okay. All right, going once, going twice, going three times on citizen comments. Item 4A, personnel transactions. Anything of interest, Dr. Slarno?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Jeff has moved, and Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve personnel transactions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. Item 5A, B, C, and D, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Seconded.
Kimberly has moved, and Jessica has seconded a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Item 6A, committee member reports, buildings, grounds, and transportation committee. Mr. Hannah.
Okay, we met last Monday, and we talked about the strategic plan of what needs to be upgraded, and we have old boilers, 20 years old or older, six of them in this building and the four at the IC, that they are all working well, but they've said that we should keep this on the radar in case we need to change them out. The transportation report, Brian said things were going as good as possible. He's still a few bus driver routes short, a full route and a half route is still open. He's driving, and he has issues when it comes to nights with trips, that there will be lots of double roads. Dave Reed talked about the building, his report, and things were going well. He was getting things ready for the spring. They didn't know how they were going to do sports for the sprint with all the snow on the ground and with football supposedly starting on March 8. But that was going to be a challenge, and that they were going to do whatever they could to work that out, and that there was going to be other stuff that he was talking about that will be presented more thoroughly at our next meeting that will run more into the budgetary part of the building and grounds. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you, Jeff. Finance, Diana.
Thanks, Rob. So finance met on February 8, and we discussed one donation, one very generous donation to our district was accepted. We then reviewed our tax levy receipts for the month of January. We talked a little bit about budget revisions that we have to make typically two to three times during the year. We've got some coming up here, and we discussed those. We'll see those later in the full board meeting. We also reviewed the audit report for 1920. I'm happy to report that the district is in some financial position at this time based on our audit. The budget outlooks continue to be challenging, but our annual audit experiences and credit ratings have proven to be financially sound, so we'll meet again on March 8. Thank you.
Thanks, Diana. Safety and wellness, Leah.
All right, we met on February 15. Brian reported to us that we'd given the SABR screener to grades 4, 6, 7, and 9, and we had 100% participation. No one out put out, so that was good. The students in the staff wellness groups are working together to develop some lessons for staff time, so it's exciting that those two groups are getting together. The district held its first equity team meeting. It had 25 educators participate, and they'll keep meeting once a month. Currently, those are led by Nehemiah. Officer Rosemeyer gave his presentation, which was the second time I've seen it, and it still amazes me how many trainings he has been to. I caught even more the second time. It's pages and pages and pages worth, which is commendable. We also discussed the COVID procedures that are currently in place, and there's a new dashboard for our district, so if you haven't looked, check it out. Got some additional information. And we discussed the different quarantine guidelines and how there's no really black or white answer to how long an employee might need to be out, but that they're kind of individual case-based. And that's my report.
Great, thanks a lot, Leah. Are there any other committee member reports? Great, thank you. Moving on to item 6B, student achievement results in a pandemic environment.
Good evening, board members. A couple of weeks ago, we had alerted the board that is at our intent to start pulling in data sets that help us to better understand how our students have been performing since March 13 of 2020. As you will know, there were no standardized tests last spring. That's a different story for this coming spring, and we previously provided you a brief calendar of what those tests are. We're fortunate because our district still identifies a number of data sets that help us to understand to what extent the pandemic has had on our students' achievement. To be sure, I think any reasonable person might suspect that, you know, we were going to anticipate a little bit of a slide in terms of student growth, and in some areas that is the case, and others we've seen our students continue to shine. It goes without saying, none of this, none of this would be possible without the dedication, the love, the creativity of our hard-working staff members each and every single day trying to find ways in which we can make learning work for kids, whether it be in the hybrid model or in the virtual format. And so I'm so grateful to my friend and colleague Sarah Straka for calling this data for us, and if you don't mind, I'd like to turn it over to Sarah to present what we've learned. Good evening, Sarah.
Thanks, Steve. Let's see here, presentation, right, Steve? Do you still have those, like, mail?
Yes, I'd be happy to present if you'd like me to.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah. Please hold.
Yeah. Okay, well, Steve's setting up. As he stated, I'll be sharing with the board and the participating public tonight's summer achievement updates, where our students are at, and ways that we're going to be moving forward as a school district to support the students. Within the presentation, I'll provide you overall school district data, and then break down the data among the elementary and then the secondary. So here we go. Okay, so let's start with some school district updates, and we'll start with our average daily attendance. So we know if students aren't there, they can't learn. We can't teach them. So we looked at the attendance from the 1920 school year to the 2021 school year, from 4K all the way through 12th grade, and we began just looking at that average. Across the board, attendance has been higher this year than the previous school year, and this is great news. But we're fully aware that just because students are attending, they may not always be engaging. So we're going to talk about engagement, especially within the virtual model, a little further down this presentation. We look at student absences, though, in general as well. We do see those are down for the school year. So if you look at the pink bar for each school building, that's the number of students or the percent of students who have 10 or more absences, and you can see there's a drastic reduction in the number of absences. This may be attributed to our virtual model that we've had for the majority of the school year. Also, Wednesdays were asynchronous days, and students had more flexibility to schedule appointments outside of that synchronous learning time. Also, with virtual learning, if a student was sick or was not feeling well, they could go participate virtually and still be counted as participating for that school day. So there's a couple of different factors going on with some of these numbers. So let's look at specifically elementary updates. So we have our enrollment numbers by learning model here for elementary for grades 4K through 5. So when we look at the quarter one numbers, as we know, only our 4K students were in session at that time, and they started right on September 1st. And I just want to give a big thank you to our 4K partners for working with the school district and their dedication and support to our youngest learners right off the bat from day one. Then, November 16, we transitioned to K2 being open. And in general, as you can see there, for grades K through 2, there's about 50/50 split on average for those K2 students between virtual and those students that were in person. However, when looking at the third quarter, we do see an uptick when we had that other on-ramp that occurred February 1st. And there's various reasons, various reasons specifically even why K2 numbers jumped in that third quarter to more in-person. Rachel Johnson, Katie Ginnanen, the ELC and PC staff did a really, really great job with tight risk mitigation protocols that were in place at the early learning and primary centers, which led to little quarantine, which led to the building to remain open. We never had to shut that building down, and parents saw that happening during the second quarter. So that may be partially why we saw those numbers increase in the third quarter. But another reason I heard from several families is that if they had siblings at the IC or middle school or high school level, they remained to those buildings open before sending back their K2 student as well. So we had a couple of things going on there where we saw an uptick in the K2 in-person numbers. But also with these transitions, we decided it would be in a corporate time to review the elementary for pool learning schedule. So Rachel Johnson, Katie Hobbie, and myself met with elementary teachers and looked at the start time, starting just 10 minutes earlier, make sure that we could get in what we wanted to get to in the morning. And we made some small tweaks here and there as well. Another example on the next slide is just an example, just to continue to keep people know about what the learning looks like for not only our ELC PC students, so an example scheduled there, but our IC is scheduled as well, students are doing on their, if they're in-person, on their in-person days, as well as their remote or asynchronous days. Collaborating has been huge in general during this pandemic, but also for our staff when we look at curriculum instruction. We've had teams coming together in their professional learning communities. K5 teams have met weekly, sometimes daily, to plan. During these grade-level meetings, they want to make sure that both the in-person and the virtual students are receiving the same essential learning outcomes, the same skills, the same knowledge. So they've been frequently meeting through dividing classrooms and making sure to filter out targets. IEP meetings are also recurring, especially on those Wednesdays, where staff members have the time to meet with families to reflect with IEPs. Also on Wednesdays, where teachers are coming together to work is to review student IEPs and also make sure that they are learning together with professional learning community time and professional development. So Wednesdays have been used, every minute has been used by staff. I think staff are sometimes more exhausted from Wednesday work because of all of the demands that they are meeting so they don't have to lose time with kids on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. This slide was shared with the education and SAW community members back in December because there was a question as to are we on pace or off pace with learning? And this slide represents the K5 level ofIC. Teachers have been working to maintain a similar pace to previous school years, but they are honing in more on certain areas and leaving some areas out. So for example, teachers are honing in more on the reading skills and strategies, cognitive awareness, writing, and grammar this year. And then when we look at math, again, teachers are narrowing down to the essential learning skills and outcomes for kids, and also providing and getting that regular feedback that if students are understanding the concept, that they can then move forward, and that has led them to be on pace as much as they can be. So here's an example on the next slide, just so I want to share who are these teachers planning and facing. We have kindergarten team, here's a picture of our semi-kindergarten teachers, I bring as well as our special education staff members. We see also a similar team at the first grade level. Everyone is at the table with kids to plan. We also have our fourth grade team, so this is a little smaller group, but I wanted to give you a glimpse of this as well because not only are grade-level team meetings, but we have our co-planning and co-serving teams as well. So here on the right side, we have Candace Bartlett, who's one of our special education teachers, and she's meeting with two fourth-grade teachers that she actually co-teaches and co-serves with to make sure that we have as inclusive of a classroom as we can. And then we have our fifth grade team as well, so we're back to holiday picture. But again, even more people at the table, not only our teachers and special education teachers that meet, but we have our advanced learning coordinator, Kristen Parmley, and many of our current professionals and support staff members as well who needs to discuss kids' needs. So those are the people. Now let's talk about the assessments. We were fortunate enough, over our time, it's almost been about a year now, to have various assessments during this pandemic that teachers have been using to make sure that they know where students are at and where they need to go. So for the English-Linguist Arts, this year especially, we were able to administer the PALS assessment and FastBridge. I'll talk about those assessments in a little bit some more, but also teachers are using common form of assessments, those quick, short checks to make sure kids are where they are and then report curves, and parent-teacher conferences are coming up as well. On the right side, you can see some of the, excuse me, math assessments, as well as the social emotional. I know Leah, in her SAW recap, mentioned the SABR screen that was done to get that social-emotional checking as well for students. Some more just detailed information about a couple of the assessments at the lower levels as well. So let's get down into the data. Okay, so the data in this shorter section will focus just on the literacy. So we had teachers administer the PALS at the K2 level. PAL stands for phonological awareness, literacy screening, so it's those baseline foundational skills for reading. And this was administered virtually to all students in the fall, and then administered in-person to those in-person students, but virtually to the attractive virtual students in the winter as well. On the screen, you can see the PALS mid-year assessments, so in January, the past three years. And it's an apples-to-apples view, looking at group rhyme, beginning sounds, and so on and so forth. As you can see, there are 2021 percentage of students who met that maybe their benchmark is lower than previous years. And we, I think the next slide I'll share some of the next steps, but we know that those phonological skills are concrete foundational skills, more for skills for students to build a strong reading platform. So what are our next steps? We are currently communicating with our K-team, I call them our kindergarten team, to identify those students who may need additional learning throughout the summer, looking at that summer school option. In March, early March, we'll be meeting with the kindergarten team to discuss next steps for more universal supports, what else can we be doing in the classroom to hone in on those phonological skills. We're going to continue to monitor student growth throughout the spring and then reassess it mainly as well. And then, like I said, identify students with needs for summer school, and also planning into their first grade year as well, as how we can support them, because it would be a support system over time as well. When we look at first grade, we are looking at more the instructional level. So if you've had an elementary kiddo, or if you have an elementary kiddo right now, their reading level is something maybe you're familiar with. Maybe they have RASD kids, and they have a certain reading level that they go into. In the previous two years, we had a concentration of students reading at that FGH mid-year level, and this year we are more concentration at that maybe D and E level, but I just have this box to show you some of our more concentrated reading levels where we're at. So we have a good amount of students reading at that first grade level, maybe more beginner first grade in January than maybe in that middle. But again, now that we have students But again, now that we have students, those students who are in-person in front of us, teachers are making those small groups and moving forward. And then those virtual teachers are also concentrating on making sure kids' reading levels are where they're at, supporting them. But we also just want to add a wide range. So we have some kiddos, I was looking at the data again today, who are reading all the way down to that P and Q, third and fourth and fifth grade level as well. So we still have that range if that concentration is a little bit higher, if that earlier in that first grade level than we have had in the past. Second grade, then, we're going to look at the second grade mid-year instructional reading levels. Again, we have that a wide range of students, but the second graders are mostly concentrated right where they need to be at. So that is nice to see as well. And that's our largest group of students within that red box there, as it says on the next slide. So that was K-2 kiddos. Let's take a look at three, five students, grades three through five. So this next, this next section is going to focus on math and reading for IC students. And this data for third-grade students was collected, okay, before I get there, we're going to head, sorry about that. As, as we look at these graphs, let's see here, can you go back one slide? As, as we look at these graphs, a couple of look fours, just visually as you're looking. So first thing, what I look at is drastic differences in the number of students at each percentile grouping. So I'll talk about that in a second. The second thing is the number, percentage of students needing intensive intervention, and I'll show you where that is in the next graph. The percentage of students who are at the 75th percentile higher, and then maybe entries in enrollment numbers, I'll speak to as well. So let's take a look at the first graph. So the first one looks at third grade in reading. At the bottom, you'll see percentiles, you'll see a purple box, the 90th, 79th percentile, a blue box, that's our legend down there. So you can see what the colors represent. And then, let's see here, this is for third grade reading. And we have third-grade FastBridge data for fall and winter, so we have two bar graphs there. FastBridge, we, here, I just want to give a big shout-out to our third-grade staff. They're the ones who decided to help this year dive in virtually and give the FastBridge assessment to our third-grade kiddos. So they piloted that virtual, this assessment virtually for us. And that's new for us because usually kids are in-person to take these. So students not only were provided 3D one-minute reading passages virtually with their teacher to work on and assess reading fluency, but the students also took a 20 to 25-minute adaptive computer test through a Google Meet while their camera was on. That teacher could then collect that data as well. So when looking at this graph, I'm looking at the students in maybe red or yellow, and I'm looking at that change over time, as well as the students in the purple and blue, and then just visually for you guys, like, we only have so much time doing a quick scan, and looking at the comparison of the percentile colors as well. So let's take a look at the next slide, math. We're seeing from fall to winter about similar achievement depth there. Let's take a look at fourth grade. Fourth grade, we see a little bit different data, meaning it's a, looking at the current fourth-grade students and looking at last year's winter to this year's winter. So it's the same group, just looking at the two, the group over two years. And then this is where we start to look for, are we seeing the slump reduction worries and concerns that we hear from families, on social media, in the news? How are our kids doing? And overall, when we look at these numbers, our students are doing pretty good. Again, I look at students who may need support and more, a more intensive intervention. So those students who may be in the red and yellow to see a filter widening over time, but then also looking at our top end as well. You will notice in this graph, we did have a reduction in student enrollment as well. So we can see that, that change in the heights there as well. So overall, we're looking pretty comparable to previous school years for reading. And then we can look at the math slide as well.
And if you don't mind me just interrupting, Sarah, one of the pieces that we did was do a deep dive into who are those kids that, because you see, we had 25 kids who were in the 90 to 99th percentile last year at this time, and then 12 kids this year in that percentile. So we did a deeper dive to find out where did those students go? And most of them took advantage, they had some means by which to go to other school districts or private schools in the interim. So it's important to know that there's lots of reasons for why this data is, is playing out the way it is. Thank you for allowing me to interrupt there. It was an important piece I felt needed to be shared.
No, you're good. That's my fifth-grade slide. So you get a full start. Yeah, looking at, you can see that even more, a quick one, our slides, Steve. The fifth-grade slide portrays that pretty well as well. So as you said, we did do a dive, especially looking at our purple. Over time, especially from, this is the current fifth grade, so looking at their fourth-grade winter to their fifth-grade winter, that's 19 students. But we also see our purple and blue quadrants, not quadrants, but areas shrink as well. And where did those 19 students go? Five students had moved, some moved to homeschool, some moved to other opportunities in other schools. So we, we did see some students leave that we anticipate hopefully will be coming back to Mont Hora when things settle down a bit. But we did have some shifting as well. Some students maybe had moved into this blue or this green area as well. But we, we did look into why or who those students were as we saw shifts. Okay, I think we can go to, yes, thank you. So another way is collecting data from families. So Mont Hora is our elementary schools, our school-wide title schools. And we have our reading and math interventions, not only pushing into classrooms in a typical school year, but providing intervention supports. And we sent out a survey to those families who receive intervention supports to get feedback on their child's engagement and learning growth in both the, we see in math, so if, just playing a plug, if you receive that email, family member, please enter that survey so we can get that information back, tell them, inform us as well. Okay, I'm going to take a break. Then is elementary. Any questions? Okay, move on to secondary updates. Okay, so here's our numbers for middle school through high school, fully virtual versus in-person. On average, about a quarter of our students have remained in a virtual learning model. And that's important for all of us to remember. As teachers are providing concurrent learning, which means students in-person are learning at the same time students are remote, through Google Meets and sharing and a camera in the classroom. So we do have to remember that part of it. And I have a visual model to talk through that really quick in the next slide. So if we think about this concurrent learning model, to keep, to keep the math pretty simple and easy for me. So let's say I had a classroom of 20 students. I know based on the previous slide that a quarter of the students are 100% virtual. So I'm going to have those students learning remotely in my classroom while I'm teaching. But then we also know, based on the math, that about 75% of students are in-person, either in Mondays and Tuesdays at UK, or Thursdays and Fridays through L through Z. So therefore, I may have seven to eight students in-person with me in the classroom. But that means while my seven or eight students are here, I may have 13, 12 to 13 students virtual as well. So teachers are planning not only for those students in front of them, but there's even more students learning virtual in this, in this model. So we have to keep that in the back of our mind as we are making adjustments and planning for learning. Okay, just example, as I offered the elementary example of the schedule, I'm going to offer the, a middle school and high school looks similar as well, concurrent learning schedule, if anyone is not aware of what that looks like for students. And then also the planning piece of it, just like I shared for the middle school, I'm sorry, for the elementary. Teachers are, are working together, collaborating, learning from each other, planning on those Wednesday days. But additionally, as I mentioned on a couple of previous slides, there's that concurrent learning layer that elementary doesn't necessarily fully have. So with concurrent learning, no matter, like I said, what direction we take in the future, planning and timing is very important to make sure those kids who are remote have their needs met as well as in-person. Okay, back again with the education and SAW presentation, when I shared information about literacy and pacing for math and literacy, also talked about something called the essential learning outcomes. These are the eight to 10 things, and of course, that students have to, must to, need to know in order to move on to the next level of course. So I just want to talk about this graph briefly because these are the outcomes that we're looking for when students leave a course. So to understand this graph, we have a green bar at the bottom. And it's saying, what it's saying is about 26% of our courses, sorry, it's saying that 26% of our courses, students have been instructed and assessed, hopefully met at least 90 to 100% of those essential learning outcomes. But if we extend that gaze a little further, and we look at the yellow bar graph, the blue bar graph, and the green bar graph, we see that about 75% of courses met, students are able to meet 70% or more of those outcomes. So teachers are still meeting kids where they need to be in these courses, but not necessarily all met all times. So what does that mean if they're not always able to meet an outcome? We have this other graph, another way of looking at it. So if there's any essential learning outcomes that aren't quite met, how many, what's the status of those remaining essential learning outcomes that aren't covered yet? And almost about half of those remaining ELOs will be touched on, but just not as much as in a typical year, you see those other colors as well, and what it means in the legend below. Again, some examples of our collaborating teams at the high school level, we have our high school English team here. Again, me with special education staff as well. An example of our eighth-grade science team, so not only we have larger departments meeting, but we have specific grade-level departments meeting to plan instruction as well. So let's start looking at the data now for middle school and high school. So the data for secondary students in this part of the presentation is going to focus on GPA in grades. While the middle school in the past has used math and SRI assessments, it was determined by the teachers and the, it was determined that the teachers and students should focus more on those classroom outcomes for a course and devote time there. So and also the building was, decided to focus more on those social-emotional screenings and areas to focus on as well. And middle school also sent out a children's survey to collect information back. So the middle school level collected their data in a different way. But we can see GPA here. So we have the average for the past five years of the collective student grade point average for the entire middle school. So look, this is the quarter-two GPA. And we can see that the 2021 overall GPA averages slightly lower than, than previous years. And that's, that's to be, I, slightly expected, I guess, in this school year, but it is not maybe where people were initially thinking grades were going, student achievement was going. When we look at the other previous 16, 17, 17, 18, 19 years, this school year is, is within the ballpark. And it helps us talk further about what's GPA means and what grades mean, and we can talk about those further discussions in a future meeting as well. High school then in comparison as well. So this is very similar graph, which just says high school without as well. We can see a slight dip in the overall GPA of students at the high school level, but overall, when looking at the past five years, very, very similar. But we also want to look at data and disaggregate it. So in shifting now from GPA, we're looking at students with maybe at least one half. That's a, and also an indicator to see how our students are doing. So if we look, we have, at the middle school level, we have first quarter grades on the left and quarter-two grades on the right. On the bottom, we see the total students for the 2021 school year, which is in green, and the 19, 20 school year, which is in pink. So the long run of these graphs, just quickly but slowly walk through it. So currently at the middle school, there's 540 students in the 2021 school year. All those 540 students, this shows you for quarter one. Down at the bottom, it says we had 59 students at the end of quarter one who had one or more apps. Now, when we look at the data above it, what we're doing is we are comparing and want to see what the percentages of students within those two data sets that have failed. Because we don't want to see a disproportionate of students who may identify as two or more races having a higher percentage of apps. Overall, when we look at this data, we can see the numbers are relatively comparable and the same. So we have this data set and we have some other slides as well. I'm not going to go through all of them in detail today, but if any more member has a question, you can definitely follow up at a future, future time if you'd like.
Thanks, Sarah.
But again, just looking at that equity piece.
This is such great data. May I just ask you to explain what the 74.6% means in quarter one?
Yes. So of the 59 students, 74.6 of the students were identified as white students. So within Mount Hora Middle School, we have a total of 540 students with a student population of 90.1% white.
So that doesn't mean that, that 75% of our students who are white had one or more apps, correct?
No, correct.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify that.
Yep. But that's the tricky part about talking about data on a graph and trying to present a big picture on a graph.
You're doing such a great job.
So this slide and the next slide breaks it down by gender, students with an IEP in our English language versus non-English language as well. So it's just disaggregating our groups a little bit more. We can then go to the next slide and looking at high school. We have similar data, but just a different view on it. Looking at the number of total, this is a little bit larger review, so total number of apps. So not necessarily students, but a student could maybe be failing one, two, three, four courses. It's that total number of apps within the building. And we can see how that has looked over the past five years, but we see a pretty big jump this school year. But we can see by the end of the semester, that bar graph in pink with the 50 in it, that's the total number of apps in courses in the high school, and that's pretty remarkable from where students were to how, how well the students ended their semester. And I'll, we can look at the next slide and I'll share a couple of reasons why as well. So on the next slide, now this is just a different spin on it. So this is the number of students. So we had 34 students total that had one, at least one app, at least one of the 54 apps on that previous slide. So there's something to be celebrated here, and I think I just want to, I know I want to make that known to, to the public. Because if you take a look at the yellow and blue bar graphs for the 2021 school year, we see 176 students with at least one app at the beginning of the year, 199 at that progress report time, at that 13th week, but then all the way down to 34. And that was the hard work of communication with teachers, with families, with students. Building Student Services Team came together, had a list, went through every single student to figure out how to support him or her. It was a divided conquer mentality to get kids where they are at and offering second, third chance. and offering second, third chances for kids to shoulder learning. And it's remarkable. So I just wanted to make sure and give the kudos to the high school team on that because this picture really shows what happened. So kudos to the team. And then we have a similar graph, not the middle school graph. We have, looking at the semester view. The left side breaks down demographics by students that have identified by a specific race. And then the chart on the right side looks again at gender, students with IEP, EL and none of EL students. Again, we want to make sure we don't have any lopsidedness with our numbers as we look at specific demographics. And we are on our last slide next. Oh, wow, Steve. So last slide, so where do we go from here? We are going to talk about assessments. And part of the state assessment system is looking at, I can't even talk anymore, talk so much of various assessments. So we have assessments starting in March with ACT testing for juniors and our EL access testing for English language learners. And then in April and May, we have forward testing for grades three through eight and a Spire testing for grades nine and 10. And that's where we'll collect that state data. That is it, I think, for this part of my presentation. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah?
If you don't mind me mentioning, I've been receiving a number of telephone calls from very thoughtful parents who've just expressed concern about catching up that gap that's occurred here now as a result of the pandemic. And we're realizing through some of this data that yes, there are some gaps. And what do we plan on doing in order to help get kids up to speed? Public education is no stranger to having circumstances like this occur. I use the example of Perkin Katrina, when we saw significant loss to learning as a result of the tragedy that transpired there in the Louisiana Mississippi Gulf Coast. The idea to remediate kids all at once at one time, there's reams of research that just talk about the importance of doing so just in time. Learning is built upon prior knowledge. And so when we begin a new concept, we're not going to try to front load all of this new information for kids in the beginning of their return. But rather, we're going to continue to do it just in time. And we believe that that's, the research shows it's a better way to demonstrate student mastery and for kids to build upon their prior knowledge. And so I want to assure families, that's not lost on us. That is an important piece to our instructional delivery as our kids onboard more and more. So Sarah Straka, tip of the hat to you. Really outstanding effort in calling all this data together. And it just speaks volumes about the outstanding, just the outstanding work of our faculty and staff during these uncertain times.
So Sarah, I was struck by the, by the reading numbers of our youngest learners. And I'm thinking about what Dr. Salerno just said. So if, so if we, if we, if we end the school year in more or less the same place on a percentage basis, then where, where do we start when we, when we come back in the fall?
Yeah, I'm just grabbing at Brad as Sarah's been talking as well. Working on those foundational skills. When we went into the pandemic, back in March, students at the 4K kindergarten first grade level were in the process of getting those foundational skills met. So looking at not only March to June, how we can continue to focus on those foundational skills. We have to let other things go, which is okay, because we need to have those foundational skills met. So that can occur this spring. But then when we get our May and Juneish results from PALS testing, that'll inform us even more as to where we need to go in the fall with those, really focusing on those foundational skills and repeating those foundational skills for kiddos. That was moving into the fall, winter, next year as well. But also, yeah, targeting those kiddos, like I said, summer school will be approaching and looking at inviting those students based on this data who need the most support. That'll also provide some time for the next four weeks to get them even closer to where they need to be as they enter the school year September 1st.
Thanks, Sarah. Other questions for Sarah? All right, hearing none? Don't go too far, Sarah. Item 6C, summer school 2021.
Okay, speaking of summer school, I wanted to share with the board how summer school is going to look this year. So we have very similar dates and times for our 2021 program. In the past, we run it from 8 to 11:30. Again, we'll be using the normal half day model. And it's going to run for four weeks again. Actually, I think it was like 35 weeks, but we have two weeks and then we have a week off during the Fourth of July-ish week. And then we'll finish up with another two weeks. So it is, it is a four week program. We are going to be inviting students to summer school and speaking to students to connect to those four weeks because our model's going to look a little different much in a while, Bob, next. So elementary programming and previous summer schools, if you remember, we had the structure set up to offer enrichment classes and student choice where students could register, sort of like in college or like through the rec department, where you see a cohort and you register for it online. But we are going to be doing that this, this coming school year. We're going to postpone this model in the next slides. We're going to postpone this model because we, we know that we need to keep things tighter. We can't have groups of students, let's say a student wanted to take crafts and book club and veterans of engineering travel into all those different classrooms and having cohorts mix. That was just, as of now, under our current guideline, just wouldn't be smart for this communication procedures. So what we're going to be focusing on the next slide is a smaller cohort half day program, where we're going to have literacy focused activities, math focused activities, movements, math activity breaks, those kinds of things built in, but also a dedicated time, as well as some hands-on science and writing activities as well. So it's going to look like a summer school version of a shorter school day, keeping those cohorts tight with one or two teachers. So for the classes, we'll have, again, have kindergarten, next slide, kindergarten kickoff. We're focused on four pairs coming into kindergarten. What that looks like, what the day could look like, routines, language, expectations, working on small motor and gross motor skills, all those kinds of things that we've had in the past with our kindergarten kickoff. But for grades one through five on the next slide, we're going to be looking at sort of like that boost me up, get step forward to the next grade level. So it will be like I said, a couple of previous slides, a half day model, where kids are going to engage in small group, whole group, with technology and literacy, math, and hands-on activities. And depending on staff interest, I am receiving interest from staff right now, a teaming structure could be in place. So we're smarter not harder, where we have potentially, this is me being fun. It's as fun as I get. Or we have a sunflower classroom, we have a firefly classroom. And let's say the sunflower classroom teacher does the literacy activities for both classrooms. But the firefly classroom teacher does the math. And we have those teachers focusing on those content areas to really work on them well with kiddos. So the teachers may be moving between cohorts, so the students will remain in those cohorts. If we get more staffing, we may have three teachers teaming up and dividing some of the learning we've got on the next slide with the sunflower, firefly, and fireworks, and really looking for the summer kind of classrooms. So that's an example of what it could look like. And in moments that conversations will, will start to occur with families on or soon after March 10th, which is parent future conferences. We have identified students that we're going to be inviting first. So enrollment will come on a first come, first served basis when they're invited. And then the space is open. We know Haverdene's classroom is the best classroom. So we will look open up opportunity for all. But again, it all, nothing's done with staffing. As I've been talking with my peers, my peers, professors, and instruction in other school districts, this is maybe a harder year because staff are tired to get, get involved in the summer school. But as of now, we at least have a couple of teachers per grade level who are interested, which is pretty neat. The middle school programming is still a work in progress as well. In the past, like I mentioned, the elementary side, we have those enrichment courses. But those are going to, that model is going to be postponed again. So we're sad to see that, but we have to make some changes just due to the pandemic. But the middle school program is focusing primarily on literacy support and math support as well. And student services is also going to play a part in it. And I know, I think I had a question from board member about what student services could look like. So Brian, he's still in call, Mrs. Johnson? Are you there?
I'm here.
Awesome. You want to just share some thoughts about summer school and what that would look like for students who may need some extra services?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll keep doing the continuum of what we've been doing for students with IEPs, which is extended school year. So those are students who have areas of regression over a long period of time. And so we'll write goals into their IEP specifically so we can not let that happen to the greatest extent we can. And so those will be ESY services, we'll continue to provide that. We'll also provide additional, just in our summer school program, we've always done a good job of going above and beyond and making sure that all students have access to summer school. As you guys may know, summer school is an addition and it's a choice. It's not a requirement for school district. So we would not have to provide paraprofessionals or special ed teachers to help, you know, support during summer school. But we do that just so we can make sure that kids have access and can engage in our summer school program. So we also have special ed teachers that participate, are running small group instructions, as well as paraprofessionals who are helping out during summer school as well. Another thing that we'll also be doing this summer is additional services. And this is a new requirement this year due to the pandemic. So we're currently in the process of looking at IEPs and looking at if goals have been met, not met, and if, again, that's a huge gap that's happened during this time block. And what are some additional services that we could include that would help, you know, students kind of catch up as well? And that could be right now. For some students, we've added additional services now. But it also could be a summer school program as well. So we're looking at all components of how to continue from a student services lens, how we can continue to keep students engaged and on the right track for learning.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that insight, walking steps. And that's what we have for summer school as of now.
Great. Questions for Sarah? All right. Thanks, Sarah. Two in a row. That's awesome. Moving on to item 6D, board liaison reflections.
If I build from the bottom, I can handle the paper too first.
Whatever, whatever works best, whoever is interested in reflecting.
Good. Thank you for the platform. So Mrs. Johnson did give me an in-person tour of the ELC and the PC. And Leah was with us virtually. So I did get to see all the floors. I watched the classrooms in action with their new minimal furniture configuration and spacing. I got to see students eating their lunches. I got to see the libraries and how students still have access to the books without needing to browse the shelves. The gym configuration for needed movement time, hallway directionals, very small groups out at recess, the controlled visitor entry at the front doors, and special teachers appearing virtually in classrooms. The mitigation protocols and really extremely careful downtime and scheduling was surely not an easy one to set up, nor do I think it would be an easy one to change rapidly, given all the moving pieces of our school system, especially when we focus on transportation and the instructional requirements that staff must abide by. I know that it took a lot to get this right. That was really apparent after my tour. And I bet I met the happy kids and the staff's reward there. Looking ahead, however, to our county's expected loosening of restrictions, I do have a few concerns. And the first would be the adult to student ratio. It was a little bit thin in the buildings. Mrs. Johnson has been transparent that she assured on care help and continues her recruitment efforts. We're always short on bus drivers. And I think the language that Dr. Salerno used recently in an email was, "We don't have a pool to pull from. We don't even have a puddle." So when I think about adding more students in the buildings, our focus on safety is going to need to shift also to a focus on supervision and safety to make sure that we still have enough eyes on kids. I'm also a little bit concerned about the equity of in-person versus virtual learning as the numbers continue to tip more towards in-person learning. Unless we have dedicated staff for each learning platform and we do provide a proper planning time additionally, one side of students could be significantly shortchanged. And I do think that would be the remaining virtual students, who are usually home through no choice of their own. And we did hear Sarah underscore some of that virtual preparation need in her presentation this evening. Along that same planning thread, right now, our hybrid teachers need to have Wednesdays. They need to have them to plan, be taking away a large portion of their legally contracted planning time by having those students eating in the classrooms, doing art in the classrooms, and having guidance in the classroom. All of that requires supervision. Unless the county attempts to flip the switch and remove this gradual piece of our plan, they're comfortable with sending kids back to the cafeteria shoulder to shoulder, we're still contractually obligated to give teachers time to plan. And I don't want to default away of our education, take a no side if we don't need them. I'm sorry, if you don't give them that need to tend to carry out these meaningful lessons. Leah, did you have any feedback about what you saw at the ELC or PC after your virtual tour?
Yeah, thank you for being my arms and legs for the virtual tour. I have to imagine that is how a teacher feels when they're remote, just being kind of shown around the building. But thank you. It was amazing to see how much space is being utilized. I know that's come up a lot, like, are you utilizing all the spaces? Yes, we are utilizing all of the spaces and some pretty creatively. Like the kids, you don't want the kids to have to eat lunch and play and learn all in the same space. They're going to get bored. So they might switch and go across the hall for their lunch or for morning snack and then come back. So we're, yeah, we're utilizing all the spaces and really going back. If we were at like a three foot limit, it would almost be the equivalent of no limit at all. In the grand kind of scheme of things, kids would be pretty much the way they are now. There's also, with the part that really threw me were the, was the furniture of the classroom. You used to see the table and the kidney table and all of that, and it was desks and they were very spaced apart. And the school does have chickenpox, the little circles are everywhere, which was, is a great visual for the kids. I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job and I applaud all that you've done because it's, it's amazing what you guys are doing.
Who's up?
IC.
Hi. I met last week, Thursday, with Katie at the IC. And she took me through, she showed me one of the classrooms of several that they use for morning breakfast and computer labs that were not in use. They converted over to another area for breakfast and lunches. She also stated that there was all available spaces are being used. Carers are working out of everywhere they can find a spot to work with kids. And that when it comes to, we went into a classroom and it looked, you know, I'm used to seeing 20 desks in the classroom, but when there was only 30. you know, I'm used to seeing 20 desks in the classroom, but when there was only 13 in there, there was plenty of space between each one. They do not put their materials in the desk at all. It's laid on the floor beside them. They have to do their work. They have to not touch anybody else's materials. When they go out for recess, there's zones. And if you leave your zone, so many kids in the zone, there's consequences that come along with that. The cafeteria is the second gym. The current gymnasium is used for gym class also. But in the staff lounge is an additional workspace. And the staff lounge is now on the stage. And that they are getting along real well for what little bit of time they've had of being back to school. And Katie and I talked about possible things that were going to come up after or around the, kind of, the March. And she told me that some of this stuff will probably not be offered anymore because she just don't know how it will take place. Like the morning breakfast. Yeah, I said, "You have to keep that going." To me personally, you have to keep that. But it was going to be hard to figure out how to keep that, that part of it going. And the lunches are served out of heated carts to the classrooms. Things were going real good, but it's going to be a challenge if things change. That's my report.
All right. Well, I'm up next. I went to visit the middle school last week, and Mr. Christensen was kind enough to give me a tour. And I was able to see classrooms, the music room, the hallways, the lunchroom, the very careful orchestration of which door students went into the lunchroom and went out to recess to keep the traffic flowing and no cohorts mixing. It was clear that the classroom space was really well thought out and very creative. They're using every space possible, including the step room has been converted into a classroom. Some of the foreign languages at the middle school are taught off of a cart in a typical year. So this year, because we don't want carts being moved in and out of classrooms, those students are actually going to the high school to be able to have the appropriate space for their classes. I was able to see the music room and how they've got spaces between the students. And then the shop, they've built a partition between student workspaces. It was clearly very well thought out. Mr. Christensen said that it was going well so far, that the students were doing a really good job of wearing their masks and social distancing, that the teachers were, you know, working hard to get used to teaching to students who were in their classroom and students who were also participating virtually. The students who are virtual was clearly a concern and focus of their attention. They didn't want those students to feel like they were being left out. They were being really thoughtful also about making sure that they were feeling a part of it and engaged. Mr. Christensen also talked about the virtual plus model, and they've been able to continue to expand it. And so some of the students who are in that virtual plus model are able to come to school four days a week. And they're continually looking for ways to bring more students in four days a week where there's student need for that. Teachers have also expanded their hours in terms of their contract so that student arrival is done in as safest way as possible. So teachers are arriving and being ready for students to get to school at 7:45, which is beyond what their typical year schedule looks like. Let's see, what else did I want to share? I guess the one other thing was, you know, we obviously talked about what the possibility is for going forward. And it was really clear that, and Mr. Christensen said that he has measured our classroom and considered different setups, that if all the students were to come back, social distancing would not be possible. That they run 24 classes during any period. For anyone who's been in the middle school, the hallways are narrow, the classrooms are small. They're bursting at seams during a normal year to try to do any sort of social distancing with all the students back, which is impossible. So that's just something to consider as we continue on. And I think that's it.
Thanks. Diana?
Thanks, Ron. So first, I just want to say thank you to the teachers, administrators, and staff. We've had quite a few pivots this year, and it's been very challenging, I think, for all of our staff. I appreciate, appreciative of all the work they've put in to try and get kids back in the buildings. It's been a tough year, and I just wanted to say that first. I also want to thank Cody for having me over at the high school. I was there at lunchtime. And I understand we're running four lunches at the, at the high school right now, just with half cohorts. We have about 145 that we're allowed to fit in our, in that very large space that we, new large space that we have in our high school. 145, six feet apart. That's how many kids we can, we can fit in there. I learned that we have some of our middle school students using space at the high school because our middle school is just, as Jessica said, really, really tight with the six-foot distancing. I understand that to rapidly pivot to all in person, according to what I was told, would be very difficult. At the high school, obviously, we know what a puzzle it was trying to get those schedules together. We have some sections of 27 kids in classrooms that there's no way that we could even do three-foot distancing in some of these older classrooms that we have. Obviously, the newer classrooms are a little bit more spacious, but the older ones would have some issues. We talked about using alternative spaces. We are definitely doing that. The issue with pulling pods out of these classrooms would be staffing, right? So you'd have to hire more staff and more supervise and more teach all of these kids if we had to do something like that. We're using, back to the cafeteria, we're using some classroom desks in there to maintain that six-foot distance. It's actually kind of a neat setup that they've got going. Our collaboration spaces are being used to store furniture that we're trying to get out of classrooms to make more space for students. Subs have been an issue, I understand, in high school, trying to get people to come in and sub. It's been, it's been really tough. It was, I mean, for the newest and largest building, it was, it was kind of tough to walk through and not see it all students, for me personally, because of all the time and effort we put into making that building what it is. I'm very thankful to our high school team for letting me come over and take a look. It was, it was nice to be in the building and see kids in the building, even if it had to be in a hybrid model. And that's what I have. Thank you.
So can you, any of you, give us a sense of what you saw with the kids? So we understand what you, what you saw in terms of space and that kind of thing. But what did you see on the face of the kids? Were they coping well with, with the changes? Were they happy? Were they engaged? That kind, or something totally different? What were the, what were the kids like?
So I was there again during lunchtime. It was, I, I saw kids in their desks, six feet apart, kind of talking to each other. You know, obviously, they can't have masks on while they're eating. And then when they would get up from their, from their seat, they would have to put their masks back on to throw away their garbage or something along those lines. But they were interacting. I think they, they looked appreciative to be there in the building and interacting with their peers. I know the teachers really liked having them there, too. They, they want to interact with the kids as well. That's what I saw.
I was also there at the middle school during lunchtime. And, you know, the kids, they had the desks all set up so they're six feet apart. And they were eating their lunch and talking over their shoulder. We went through the hallways and saw kids in the classroom, and they were engaged and talking with their teachers. I mean, you know, you don't see their, you don't see their smiles, but, you know, like, it kind of just looked normal, minus the fact that there were fewer kids. And then what I, something I did say is all the classrooms had, you know, a big screen TV so that, you know, the students could see the other students and those students on the screen could see. You know, like, so everybody was kind of seeing each other, and it looked like they were, you know, paying attention. That, that seemed like a good aspect.
I got there later in the day, about 2:30, 2:35, somewhere there. We were in the fifth grade wing, and we stopped in. And the students were enjoying themselves in their classroom. They were doing their assignment that the teacher was teaching them. They were listening. They had their mask on. They were being social. Well, the three feet that between the desks was being taken care of and represented properly by the kids. We looked in on another classroom, and we pretty much saw the same information that the kids were doing their stuff from their class desk and that they had their mask on and they were doing what they had to. The part of being outside, some kids wore their mask and some kids decided that they did not want to. And I don't know exactly how that ended up, but they have some issues with that area. They, they follow through real good with what they have to do. And I think they were happy to be there. And, you know, it's just, I think they'll be a lot happier with the rest of them being there. But, you know, there's some issues to work out there.
Kids at K for two are exuberant to be there, honestly. Play-based learning, very important for K for two. This is the first time in a long time any of them have had a playmate. And you can see how excited they are just to be amongst their peers. Very evident. When their principal walks through, it's basically a celebrity sighting when they see Mrs. Johnson. I imagine the reactions have been different when principal on Quest Box drove. It's joyful to see that. I am happy that they get some interaction with their peers.
You know, I saw some interactions, and everybody was very excited to see principal and Mrs. walk by. There, there was a lot of, you know, excitement in the room.
Great. Anything else on this topic? All right. Thanks to you all for your reflections. 6E COVID-19 update. Dr. Soler?
Yes, and please do allow me to express my gratitude to board members for having taken time from their schedules to go out and visit our sites. I know each of you are assigned liaisons, and that's how we arrived at that. I also want to express our gratitude to our 4K partners. They too have been in constant communication with the district about the good work that they're doing, but also, quite frankly, some of the challenges that they've faced. So every one from 4K to 12th grade had a touch point with our board members. You know, if you look at the board docs tonight, you'll see a number of studies that I put in there. Some of those studies, quite frankly, contradict one another. And that's really the case that I share with you this evening. We have constantly put our foot on the accelerator, sometimes hit the brake. Our quest to bring as many kids back to school is impacted by this conflicting information. In fact, we've pumped the brakes so many times, I think we're actually wearing through our pads and into our rotors. And I'm worried that any possible change coming out of Public Health Madison-Dane County's order here in a few short days, for those of you who are not remembering, their order does expire here on Wednesday, March the 10th. We're anticipating an update to that order here in the coming days. We do not have any advanced knowledge as to the nature of the specifics related to the order ahead of time. So when you public hear about it, we too are, are hearing about it. And the key for us really is this concept of square footage. To the point that many board members have made, if we do not see any change in physical distancing, it just would simply mean that we're not going to be able to accommodate the full return of our students. And I've given you a couple of pictures here that you'll see on the screen where we're utilizing spaces for not, for the, for not the original purpose. You see here at the middle school, in the step room, and in the cafeteria, we're holding classes as well. One of the pieces that I often think about is what will happen in our district if even we go to a three-foot physical distancing stance through Public Health Madison-Dane County's new order. And up to this point, we've been able to contact trace and eliminate through quarantine individual students. But my understanding, and I'm going to call on my friends and colleagues, Nurses Goodwin and Shaw, to help me answer this question. What, what does happen if Public Health decides to say to us, "Yep, we can return everybody back. We don't need to worry about physical distancing"? What does that do to your contact, contact tracing efforts? If you don't mind, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but would you be able to speak to that, please?
Hi, everybody. This is Pam Shaw. I am the school nurse for the kindergarten through fifth graders. And CJ Goodwin, my colleague, takes care of sixth grade through high school. And as a part of our school nursing duties this year, we became contact tracers. And we took a certification course and have collaborated with our colleagues at Public Health pretty intimately as we have become the investigators for any positive cases in our school district this year. And so what that means is if we have a student or a staff member who has tested positive while they have been on campus, we become the investigator for trying to determine who needs to quarantine within our school family. Public health will then also do contact tracing for that person within their personal life, their families, their friends, their other obligations. But we are the ones that need to go into the classrooms and into the workspaces to determine if people have been able to maintain their six feet for 15 minutes or more in the 24-hour period. And that really is the gold standard. And as we review our infection control mitigation procedures with Public Health, because then, once we do our investigation, we get in touch with them. They review each case with us. And they have concurred with us every single time that currently we are doing an outstanding job of maintaining that six-foot distancing for that 15-minute obligation of time in a, in a daily period. So to Dr. Soler's question, what do we do when we shrink down our world? And it's, it's pretty direct logic to say we no longer have that six-foot distancing. Well, maybe that determination might be lessened. being exposed, more students and staff needing to quarantine. And there, we've lost the ability to maintain our tight cohorts and keep school moving as efficiently as we have throughout the school year to this point. I would just like to take a moment to say how impressed and proud I am of all of our students and our staff and our families for doing the phenomenal job that they have done. And many of you tonight have spoken to this as well. Public Health just repeatedly has said, no, you're doing everything right. No, I don't think you need to quarantine an entire classroom. No, stay the course. You guys are doing a really wonderful job. So to this point, I think we can be very proud of what we've done. And if you look at our dashboard, you can see our numbers are relatively low. And then the number of students or staff that we have had to ask to go into quarantine because of a positive at school has been relatively low. It's, it's been wonderful to see how well the system is working.
Thank you so much, Pam. And so this really leads us to the question at the table here. We are looking for a decision about a final schedule change for the year. The stress caused by constantly picking at this scab, quite frankly, is not good for anyone. Our children, plus our families and our staff. We're leaving scars, quite frankly, for too many. And I am respectfully requesting that when a schedule changes to come, this be whatever it is, whatever it is, it be the final schedule change of the year. And we know we need to await what Public Health Madison Dane County shares in terms of their next order. In my mind, there's two options at our disposal. The first is to see what comes out of the new order from Public Health Madison Dane County. And then the other option is to stick with the plan that we had initially signaled to our families, which had to do with on-ramping and off-ramping. That's what we messaged to our families. We had said to them that we might consider that for the fourth quarter. And I, I think if we begin that process now, we can likely implement that on-ramp or off-ramp March 22nd, a full week before fourth quarter begins. And this assumes that we're maintaining six feet of physical distancing. And, and the point being made that there are some circumstances whereby just because of classrooms and numbers already, we may not be able to permit everybody who wishes to on-ramp into hybrid under this model. If we elect to wait and see what changes come out of PHMDC's decision on or around March 10th, and we decide to on-off ramp, we will, we will implement on-off ramp sometime during the week of April 12th. So the very soonest I can think that we'd be able to do any kind of on-ramp, off-ramp is March 12th. But if we elect to wait to find out what happens with PHMDC and then we decide that that's too restrictive, I don't foresee us, just because of spring break being smack dab in the middle of things, I don't see us getting to a yes on on-ramping and off-ramping until April the 12th. Now, the other option is to roll the dice and see if March 10th brings a favorable outcome with PHMDC, if that happens this year. And we know depending upon, and I'm going to use the word laggardly, PHMDC has laggardly decided and determined how fast we can move. To President Heiss's comments at the onset of our meeting tonight, this carries the weight of law and we don't have any way around it. So we have a Board of Education gradual reopening plan that says we will follow Public Health Madison Dane County. And there's only been one exception by where we have not followed that. And it had to do with travel here for athletics and co-extracurriculars. How we respond is when and if we see a change from PHMDC and what that order is on March 10th. So status quo until there's any change. So I've been asked to put together a schedule. And here's my best thinking as of today, based upon what I know today. If we were to wait for Public Health Madison Dane County, I think it's important that we survey our families to find out their wishes. I know many families who've said, gosh, you know, we'd love to come onboard full-time. Let's make it happen. And I have other families who've said to me, you know, we were with you with hybrid, but because of maybe my students' special needs, I'd like now to move back to hybrid. Taking all of those requests K through 12 means that we again rebuild our schedules around our families' needs. We're here to serve you and this is a requirement, I believe, in order to move forward. There is not a single school district, a public school district in Dane County right now that is running full-time five days a week, 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM. It's not happening. They may be doing some version of what we're doing, but there is not anyone that's able to, under the current Public Health Madison Dane County order, to meet that test. Our goal is to do as the community and the board wants to do. We're just asking that we not do both, on-ramp and off-ramp, or this, this choice two plan. And I'll talk a little bit more about this in a moment. Once we've gathered the information from our parents about those requests, we need to identify what new protocols are part of that order. And then we need to develop systems to train our staff around those protocols. And then, of course, we also need to respond to our dedicated staff members' individual health needs. Offer leaves where appropriate and, of course, substitutes. It is not a light switch. A lot of planning needs to be done and it doesn't help that spring break is smack dab in the middle of it. So if we elect to wait until PHMDC makes some change or we decide to on-ramp or off-ramp as we had initially signaled, I know that this community has done so in a very thoughtful way. And that's what makes this community as special as it is. We're not going into this blindly. Your Board of Education has really taken this big decision to heart. It's not been easy for anyone, most notably our kids and our families, our staff, but lest we not forget our Board of Education. I want to talk a little bit about fall. Some people are asking me about fall. Hey, Steve, what do you think? Will we, will we have school in the fall? It is important for me to distinguish between what I think and what I know. To the latter first, no one knows anything with certainty. And those who tell you otherwise, why, then they should be viewed, in my opinion, with a high degree of skepticism. But to the former, what I think, absolutely yes. I do believe, I do think, all things being equal today, I think we are starting to see some international data, federal direction, and local indicators that prepare us for a full return this fall. This still likely means that we may not be living as we, you know, we were back prior to March 13th, 2020. I think I heard on one of the Sunday news shows, Dr. Fauci mentioned, we'll still be wearing these masks even into 2022. But I, I do think that we will be back in the fall. And I think it's possible because of the dedication and safety procedures that have been put into place here. I know the unbelievable stress on you all. You have experienced this throughout the entire pandemic. In the face of wanting to honor many, many competing interests before you, Board of Education members, each of you handled these decisions before you with extreme care and compassion. Steve Jobs once said, if you want to be happy, don't be a leader, go sell ice cream. Not everyone can do what you've done, Board members. Make the decisions you've made. You've done it well. Regardless of the decisions we have before us in the coming days, I have great faith in you and I know the rest of the community does as well, to heed the rational input, ignore the noise, and more importantly, keeping the best interest of our students at the forefront. That's, that's my plan for now. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Dr. Solerno?
Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Move on. Seven A, consider action to temporarily alter the employee handbook. Dr. Solerno?
Good evening again, Board members. We continue to have, I think, a positive working relationship with all of our employee labor groups. This is inclusive of our teachers. They approached us some time ago about some additional considerations related to the employee handbook. And we're pleased to tell you that while we didn't negotiate, we certainly did have a very thoughtful meeting confer on a couple of topics. You'll see a screenshot of them. Let me see if I can't present my screen for you, those in the public. And these would be to amend certain parts of the employee handbook because of the pandemic and to reflect, quite frankly, what Mrs. Aragoni had said just a few minutes ago. These are staff members who are already giving so much of their time above and beyond what's considered the contract. Many of our faculty and staff have spent hours and hours and hours of time in professional development. And dare I say, and I feel badly for even saying this, many of them did it even without pay. They did it throughout the summer to make certain that they hit the ground running. They did that all throughout the spring last year as we were just trying to find our way through this. And so a request was made to alter the employee handbook for the upcoming school year that would reflect this time that's been put into their own professional development over the course of the past 18 or 12 months, 12 months or so. And then we also know that the pandemic has hit a number of people very hard. It's impacted their sick leave accounts. And some of our staff members, though we've tried very, very hard not to place people on unpaid leave status, one of the ways that we're trying to be creative in doing this is to allow one more day that can be transferred to, from professionals' leave accounts. So that way, anyone who might be in such a hard circumstance would not be without. And this, both of these, by the way, would just be through the conclusion of the school, school year for this matter. So we're just asking for the Board's consideration and our, again, our continued attempts to acknowledge the, the hard work of our faculty and staff. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have.
I'll move adoption.
I've made a motion to approve.
I have made a motion to approve and Jeff has seconded it. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and these temporary alterations to this employee handbook are approved. Item seven B, second reading, consideration of revisions to policy 345.7, high school level coursework completed in middle school, beginning with the 2021-22 school year. Mrs. Straka.
This was a, a, a second reading of this policy. It was a request that we note when this would begin. And we are proposing so that we're not changing the rules for students in the middle of the game, that we would have this begin next fall. Thank you for your consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second. Kimberly has moved and Jeff has seconded a motion to approve on second reading revisions to policy 345.7. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and revisions to policy 345.7 are approved. Item seven C, the 2021-2022 CISA V service contract. Dr. Solerno?
Yeah, just based on the geography of where we are as a school district, we receive services from CISA II as well as CISA V. Out of CISA V, we're fortunate to have some support for our students with Deaf or hard of hearing services. And we're asking for the Board's consideration for us to continue in this regard for the upcoming school year, please.
Jeff has moved, Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the 2021-2022 CISA V service contract. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the CISA V service contract is approved. Item eight A, citizen comments. Those wishing to speak should please text their last name, first and last name to 608-250-9166.
Well, good evening. Anna McMillan, how are you?
Hi, my name is Anna McMillan and I'm a senior. I'm asking that the Board gets us back to school in person full-time. I want to start off by saying thank you to the Board members, teachers, and community for putting in the work that has allowed me to go back to school two days a week. There's no denying that this has been a really hard year, especially given the fact that I'm a senior and I now know that I'm not alone in that. I remember the Board meeting back in August where we thought that we wouldn't be going to school and I broke down in tears. There was a lot of unknowns then. But over the past six months, things have changed. In his 1961 inaugural speech, John F. Kennedy famously said, "Ask not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." In my own life, I've seen this play out in a number of scenarios. My dad has continued to work full-time in construction to provide affordable housing to those who need it. My brother has worked in a classroom doing daycare full-time for school-aged children since they grow. My other brother works full-time at Pritchard. And I myself have even worked in a nursing home, even caring for self-patients with COVID. These are not things we had to do, but we chose to do because we believe it was what was best for the community. We can't just delay everything for this long and expect the world to have a solution for us. So today, I ask the Board, our teachers and staff, ask not what this community can do for you, but what you can do for this community. Finally, getting back to school two weeks ago is like waking up on Christmas morning. And I want to thank everybody for how hard they've been working to make that possible. Throughout the majority of the pandemic, I've been upset with the circumstances and not people. But I now find myself getting more upset with others. I find it difficult to see that 80% of the state has the opportunity to be in full-time when we are only in for two days. It's hard to be in person and then have to sit in front of a computer again and see the other half of my class live through a screen. As much as it hurts me not to be in school full-time, I heard even more from the elementary age students. I remember when I was in first grade, McWhitty had to sit next to a stack of books because I was being too social with my classmates. It just breaks my heart to think that first graders today don't even have that opportunity. The part that is most difficult for me is that we don't get to make the choice for ourselves. The decision has already been made for us. I understand that we are taking precautions and with good reason, but the evidence shows that schools are simply not a hotspot for the virus. I'm not demanding that everybody be forced to return to school. I just ask that we, as students, be given the choice to either stay virtual or go back to school four days a week. This should be each family's decision. My mental health has suffered and I am blessed to have a support system as my back 24/7. But what about the kids who don't? What about the kids whose only positive social interaction was at school? What about those who do not feel comfortable asking for help in their own mental, or in their unstable mental condition? My physical health is the risk I will, I am, I am willing to assume, but my mental health is how your choices are affecting that. And I understand that this would put some teachers in a tough spot if they don't want to go back. But like how everyone else has, done what is necessary for us, for us to help return us to some sort of normalcy, I implore our teachers to do their part. Not because you want to do it, but because it's the right thing. If you don't like the circumstances that you are in, then perhaps it's time to change them. I'm hopeful that I will get at least a part of my final quarter in the Mount Morab area school district as a senior that is supposed to be filled with sporting events, senior ranks. to go back, but like how everyone else has, Dawn, what is necessary for us to help return us to some sort of normalcy? I implore our teachers to do their part, not because you want to do it, but because it's the right thing. If you don't like the circumstances that you are in, then perhaps it's time to change them. I'm hopeful that I will get at least a part of my final quarter in the Mount Barb area school district as a senior. That is supposed to be filled with sporting events, seeing the friends, and seeing all my friends who choose to come back before we say our goodbyes. I'm speaking for myself, but also the kids who don't want to speak up, who are too afraid of the backlash they receive. And if you do not choose to support my decision of wanting to be back in school four days a week, that's okay, because different opinions are okay. But please show me the same respect that I am showing you if you make the decision to stay all virtual. And please don't say, because I feel this way, because of my position, I don't care for others. The career path I've chosen and work I'm doing right now is caring for others. What is the end point? What is going to make you change your mind? Maybe an article or a statement from PHMDC? It's easy to find another article or statement out there to contradict exactly what they have to say. How about we stop listening to others and start listening to people who are in this district and actually doing the schooling? When will normal come? It probably won't. So let's start making a change now, not in three months when school is over. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. You are a true leader. We appreciate your comments. Hey, by the way, I wanted to just share, for Anna and other students who might be listening, Mr. Lundquist and the high school administrative team are already thinking about alternatives for prom as well as graduation. So I know he's assembling a group of people to address that. Anna, thank you so much. I don't see anyone else who's asked to sign up tonight, Mr. Heiss.
One last, one last, six oh eight two five zero nine one six six. Going once, going twice, going three times. That's it for citizen comments for tonight. You'll see item nine, future agenda items. Item 10 is schedule of next meetings. Is there anything of particular interest there, Dr. Solano?
No, sir.
All right. That brings us to item 11.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Kimberly has moved, Jeff has seconded a motion to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.